Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 13th, 2014 meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. I'd like to start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance, so if everyone could please stand.
(inaudible)
Okay, we have three items on our agenda tonight. We have a sketch plan and two actual preliminary final applications. The sketch plan, we're going to do first, and for those of you who don't know what a sketch plan is, it's an informal discussion with the board and the applicant about a, an idea that somebody has for a possible development. And before we get to that, I'd like to, I guess, make an announcement that's somewhat sad for the town and happy for her. Katie Evans, our longtime planning person here, has submitted her resignation as becoming the Director of Development for the Town of Victor. So we wish her well, thank her for seven years of service.[91.11][91.11](applause) Victor will be very happy to have you, and you'll be very, very missed here. So good luck.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And with that, you can do the job your last time and start reading the first item.
Okay, sketch plan, application number one. Steve Lingard, Network Building and Consulting, LLC, 266 Crossgates Road, Rochester, New York, 14606. Request an informal discussion with the board regarding the construction of a telecommunications facility with a 120-foot monopole tower within a 75 by 75-foot fenced area and associated site improvements located on 125 Panorama Creek Drive on 11.62 acres. The properties now are formerly owned by Handicap Children's Camp of Monroe County and is zoned LI. Application number 14P-009, SBL number 138.08-1-65.
My name is Pat Fitztrill, I'm here with Philip Slidell. This is Steve Lingard and Jim Wickholm. We're here on behalf of AT&amp;T. I'd just like to thank the members of the board for giving us this opportunity. This won't take much of your time because we are here just for preliminary discussion. I brought some boards. Basically, we'll just go through, just in somewhat brief detail, of what AT&amp;T plans or is proposing. As you can see, we have 120-foot monopole. This will be a self-collapsible tower. And it's located below that is an 11 by five foot, or 11 by 20-foot equipment shelter, excuse me. I don't know if you can see this or not. Basically, we've cited, AT&amp;T's, they've identified a gap in its existing coverage, and what they've done is they've selected a site to remedy that gap, and in doing so, they've selected a site that's located behind a light industrial facility. It's surrounded by trees. There's good coverage for aesthetic purposes. There's not residential, there's not residential housing located nearby. And as you can see here, if you can, basically, there's a grade that will go up, so you'll see the tower. I don't know if you're familiar with the Popeyes, but it's located right behind there. So AT&amp;T feels that they've identified this site. It's the best site to fit their needs and is also the best site for the town because it is located in such a good location behind this manufacturing facility. So with that...
So, this is proposed to be right by the retention pond? Would that be?
You'll see, I'm sorry.
Where is it exactly proposed to be located on that site?
Go ahead, Steve. It's actually the abandoned baseball field.
Come on up and, sorry.
My name is Steve Lingard, I'm with NBNC. We're actually proposing to situate it on the abandoned baseball field, right inside the fenced area there.
Okay.
It's actually at Camp Hackamo. So there's, I don't know if you're familiar with the area, but there's essentially a small area where there's, you know, the trees open up, and it will be located right in there, so. One of the issues that did come up, we did receive the memo from the board with respect to the setback, so I don't know if that's what you may be referring to. Because the tower will be self-collapsible, you know, we do, or, you know, plan to address that further in the SUP application and site plan approval application, so.
Can you explain to the audience and the thousands watching at home what self-collapsible means?
Sure. So, in this instance, we have a 120-foot tower, and what will happen is, the tower will essentially collapse on itself. It will collapse in half. So rather than if it, you know, just falling over, it reduces the fall zone, so it won't fall on top of surrounding buildings, and therefore, the setback, you know, current setback requirement of 200 feet can be reduced.
I just had a couple of questions.
Sure.
Now, Pat, this is, this is like any other cellphone tower, I assume is standard, 120?
About that, yeah. I mean, they range in size. This is, you know, I've seen them go up to 150 feet. This is, you know, substantially smaller, so.
Now, and it's only one style that they make, like, similar to this one that you showed us. I understand that there's different styles they make these days.
Sure, there is. This monopole is what AT&amp;T is currently using. They're not using the guide towers, which are more visually intrusive and generally located in more rural areas, I should say.
Do you have any other of these towers in the Town of Penfield presently?
Steve?
I'm thinking.[436.62][436.62](laughing)
There were several other sites located throughout that we did identify. And basically, what AT&amp;T does, they start with a site selection analysis, and they'll identify certain locations throughout the area, you know, in this instance, the Town of Penfield. And they'll, what they do is, they put together what are called RF propagation maps. And what they do is, they, you'll see three separate colors, generally green, orange, and yellow. And what they do, they try to locate and identify the best spot to put an existing tower to expand the coverage, so you'll see more green as opposed to orange and yellow. And in this case, this is where, you know, the site that they've essentially identified. What we do and will provide with the SUP application and site plan approval application is a complete analysis of this site, so you'll see, you know, before and after RF propagation maps, so.
And to also answer your question, I believe Verizon Wireless just recently finished construction behind Charlie's Restaurant near Baytown Plaza, and I believe it's a 120-foot monopole.
Which is a good question. Now, do you, all the different AT&amp;T and other, do you guys share all these, I mean?
That's really the reason for the 120-foot tower. That leaves enough separation for additional carriers. I believe the code calls for it. It has to be a three-carrier pole versus having 100-foot towers close by, build 120, and then there's still room for two other carriers.
Have you contacted some of the other local businesses? I know across 441, there are some, not really towers, but there's equipment, cell equipment located on some of the buildings over there. Have you approached any of those business owners for, you know, mounting the equipment on one of their structures so you wouldn't have to build the pole, or?
Well, this particular search area, which will be in a detailed site selection analysis, our coverage, our main objective for my engineer was the plaza, Tops, Home Depot, in-building coverage and right in that general vicinity. So my coverage really was, I actually started at the plaza. I met with the town, we did an informal meeting months ago, and we looked at it, there was a small piece of town property that, that wouldn't work. I think there was five other locations that really didn't work either for, the town really didn't like them, or my RF engineer, it wouldn't work for my engineer.
And AT&amp;T is, just to build off that, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, go ahead.
Just from the perspective of AT&amp;T, they try to, you know, co-locate on existing facilities. I think in this instance, we did look at the, was it the courtyard?
Yes, there's a hotel.
And that just wasn't suitable for RF purposes, so.
Can you also explain, I know that I've been involved in a few of these over the years, and can you explain to us and in the audience some of the ways you go about figuring out, other than, you know, I know the propagation maps, but it seems that I remember, the more people that use cellphones, the more towers you need to support those. Can you go into that a little bit?
Yeah, well, right now, AT&amp;T is currently trying to build out its coverage so that there's sufficient in-building coverage. And when I say in-building, I mean, you know, in fact, for example, in this building. Previously, AT&amp;T was looking for sufficient in-car service. Now we've gotten to the point where, you know, there's so many, you know, different businesses and services that run off wireless. I mean, for example, you can swipe your credit card now, and it goes through a wireless system. So there has to be sufficient in-building coverage. So what they try to do is, as I mentioned, they try to co-locate on existing facilities by adding additional antennas. In this instance, we'll have nine antennas. So, from a, from a building-out-the-network perspective, you know, they will try to locate on existing facilities and reduce the necessity to build additional towers. You know, but that being said, one of the reasons that they're using these monopoles is because they are less visually intrusive than, say, the guide towers, so. Does that answer?
Hey, yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Doug?
Yep, a couple of questions. Who is the neighbor to the south? And, or is that owned by the same folks that you're working with?
I believe that's the scientific, knowledge, scientific Fisher.
The industrial facility?
Well, just to the south. I mean, one of the issues is the tower and collapsing and whether it's going to fall onto the neighbor's property, that kind of thing.
Sure, and that's, you know, again, this is one of the issues that we will address further in the SUP application, but I guessing that we're going off the code here because the code does require the tower to fall within the current property. So we will address that. I don't know off the top of my head, that's something we can follow up with you on, who the current property owner, but it is the limited industrial facility.
And actually, for all the properties, I see you have the tax account numbers on there. If you could put the owner and the occupant?
Yeah, we, well, exactly.
On your site plan, so we kind of know who's where on the site plan.
Yeah, absolutely.
Another question, how far off of Panorama Trail is this, the tower? And I'm just thinking, is it, I'm sure it's visible, but how far off the?
I would definitely, well, definitely add that to the site plan.
Yeah, maybe just a dimension.
And to answer your question, it will, it will be visible. I think just the top portion of it, but it should be visible.
Several thousand, it looks like it's several thousand feet.
Yeah, it's several thousand feet away. We actually just visited the site, and it is very, it's tucked away in the back there. You know, that being said, one of the questions that did come up from the memo was that there was some view sheds, or request for view shed photos, excuse me. And, you know, AT&amp;T is willing to, you know, put together some photo simulations and is happy to accommodate any requests that the town may have from certain locations. So we certainly can go to Panorama Creek Drive and take pictures from there, if you'd like.
And you're, you would be purchasing the property?
No, we will be leasing. We have a letter of authorization currently, and Steve actually is in charge of the lease negotiations with the current landlord.
And is that the same people that own the rest of Camp Hackamo?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that's it for me.
Yes. I'd said there's a gap in service for AT&amp;T in the area. Can you just give an approximate, perhaps, of, if you added this tower, how far out would it help the area? Is it judged in miles, perhaps, like a radius?
For this specific site, generally, from what I understand, there should, you'll see, what, two miles in between separate sites, generally speaking?
Yeah, again, we can, we can provide you with propagation maps that show the connecting sites. My engineer, not only is this for car coverage and call connectivity, but again, it's really addressing the capacity issue. In-building coverage at the Home Depot, Tops, his main focus really was the plazas there at Panorama Trail.
The main valley area?
Exactly.
Okay.
I mean, for example, we were just at Popeyes, and I had, I think, one bar, so, you know, that's what AT&amp;T is looking to address, so, especially with Home Depot being right there.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. We've had some involvement with mono towers in other communities where additional equipment was mounted onto those towers, where towers without guy wires had to be guyed for balance, or towers that had guy wires had to have additional guy wires installed for balance. So have you given any thought to that? Is there any reasonable assurance to the town that, that you won't be coming back before the board to request permission to guy this tower down for mounting of additional equipment that would throw the balance of the load off?
Yeah, we could, we certainly can, you know, bring that to AT&amp;T. From what I understand, there's been no discussion to add guys to this monopole. What they'll do is, they will design the tower so that it, you know, sufficiently can handle additional carriers to avoid that. What can't happen is, if the tower is overloaded, because there are, you know, another carrier will be co-locating, excuse me, sometimes you'll have to support the structure. You know, that being said, I haven't personally come across an instance where we've had to add guys to a monopole.
Thank you.
Sure.
Structural.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. We'll provide a complete structural and foundation analysis. One of the items that did come up also with the Conservation Board, we did see, or, excuse me, I'm sorry, in the memo that we received from the Project Review Committee, it was the geotechnical analysis, which we will provide.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this application? Yes, sir, come on up and, if you could, come to the podium. Actually, if you could come over to the podium and speak into the microphone and reintroduce yourself and your address, that'd be terrific.
Larry Heller, 55, Winding Creek Drive, which is in Allen's Creek.
Just grab the microphone and be, thanks.
As you folks are probably aware, there's about 200 condominiums down there, 200,000 to 250,000 and thereabouts. It's hard to tell, because I couldn't tell from the diagram, exactly where the proposed location of this tower is. That's what's going to be most important to approximately 40 homeowners, not just one or two or three. We're talking as if this is a purely industrial site. The industrial site, think of Popeyes, across the street from Home Depot. Think of Tops where that is. Think of the big industrial site, which I assume you're talking about is Fisher?
Yeah.
Or what is commonly called Fisher, I don't know how many places are in there now. And then, to the, basically, the south of it, Camp Hackamo. Well, about 20 to 40 of the condominiums face Camp Hackamo, and they are elevated, not down in the valley. There's a valley that goes down to the water, then it comes up into the residential area. So about 20 to 40 condominiums will be affected, somewhat substantially, depending upon the location of this tower and how much lights it has on it. Right now, it's totally dark back there, because as we all know, Hackamo hasn't been opened much lately. And they were nice enough to turn their lights off out there. So it happens to be very park-like for those fortunate enough to be looking down that way. Obviously, it's not going to be kept totally blank and void forever, that portion, but what we're very concerned about is where the tower will be. The words I heard used, well, I think the words used was the rear or the back of the industrial location. That puts it right near very clear view of many of the condominiums in Allen's Creek. Now again, I'm not sure what back means. If back actually means what I think of the front, towards Popeyes, that won't be much of a problem. But if back means back behind Fisher Scientific, basically, back of Hackamo, that's going to be there. And I'm assuming that because of, I'm assuming, federal safety or other regulations, and again, I'm speaking out of school, I don't know the specifics, I'm assuming there's going to have to be lights on this thing.
That's a good question.
And right now, there are no lights at all back there, so could we get an idea of what lights there are and where we're talking about it being located? Again, think of 441, Big Hill, up to 441, from where Hackamo is. If this is going to be up on the hill, surprisingly, it would be much less of a problem, because nobody's really looking up that hill. I would think you'd want it up the hill, because that of being at that many feet higher, closer to heaven. If we're talking down at the bottom, nearby Hackamo, it's going to be, whatever lights are going to be, are going to be pretty clearly visible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, just addressing...
If you wanted to just address the lights, that'd be terrific.
Certainly. From, there won't be lights on the tower, because it's not high enough, so the FAA will not require it, so that should alleviate that concern. From what we can tell, just based on a simple analysis and just so that you know, the closest residential, I guess, grouping we've seen is over 500 feet away. You know, and that's one of the things that AT&amp;T did take into account. That being said, you know, this also is one of the items that will, it'll be further addressed in the SUP application and site plan approval application, and can be addressed with the photo sims as well.
You certainly would take photo sims in those condominiums.
Yes.
Why don't you say that, you have the record on board.
Yeah, yeah, we'd be, AT&amp;T would gladly take photo sims in the...
Do I understand the representation of no lights?
Yes.
I think that would be the most important thing to, again, about 40 residents there.
Sure.
If you'd like, sir, afterwards, we could get together, we could look at a map, and we could definitely do photo simulations right from the condominiums.
Okay, anybody else in the audience care to comment on this? Yes, sir, if you could just come up and introduce yourself and where you live and...
Tony DiCario, 65, Waterview Circle, also in the Allen's Creek Valley condominium area, townhouses, I should say, yeah. Actually, we're right across the creek from, so we are, what would you say, 50 feet from, from the buildings over in Hackamo? So it's really very close, it's a stone's throw away. So we really would be interested in knowing where the tower is going to be. And could I suggest that there is a homeowners association at Allen's Creek Valley? It would be very nice if these gentlemen could come and make a presentation, I think, to the homeowners association, so that way we...
Certainly something that we can suggest.
Make people feel better, yeah.
Sure, absolutely.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Anyone else, sir?
Charles Lewis, I'm at 56 Waterview Circle, across the street from Tony and Gil. And my, I have two questions. Number one, there's a large property that is part of that camp now. What happens to the rest of that property? Does anyone know?
They, they may know, but do you happen to know?
I can speak to that to a certain degree. We are, we are just leasing the 75 by 75. The entire parcel, I believe, 11-plus acres, or the balance is, is in the process, I believe, of a transaction taking place.
Okay.
I don't know if it's, would really be for me, would be correct for me to speak any further than that.
I think one of our concerns is that this tower might have huge impact upon how the rest of that parcel gets developed. It's a lovely and unique parcel. We'd like to have some assurance that it will stay that way. I think the other thing I'd like to know is, what assurance do we have that none of the trees will be removed? Because I don't think, many of us are not really totally opposed, because we are protected by trees from viewing at least the lower 90 feet of it. But if those trees were to be removed, we're looking at a big tower in our backyard. Thank you.
Thank you.
I could speak to that also. As far as the trees, currently, we have no plans at all removing any trees. There is a possible issue with the access easement, and if we have to go to a Plan B, there is one dead tree that may have to be removed for the access road. But all the surrounding trees, we won't have to touch. As part of the reason I picked this spot was because of that.
Any, any other applicants? Any other comments from the audience? Any comments from the board? Okay, thank you very much for coming.
Sure, I guess just at this time, just for the record, we would, you know, request that the board issue sketch plan approval so that we can proceed with...
What we do is, we will reconvene at the back of the auditorium at the end of the public hearings.
Okay.
And we'll probably have an informal discussion a little bit about this. And our general practice is to put our thoughts together and then issue you a letter.
Okay.
So it's not really an approval, actually, it's not, not really, it's not an approval of the sketch plan, it's just a letter giving you our thoughts.
Okay.
On the, on how to, or move forward, or, you know, just what we think.
Okay, great.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Katie, would you like to read the second item?
Public hearing application number one. Joseph Ardieta, PE, Vanguard Engineering, PC, 241 Castle Bar Road, Rochester, New York, 14610. On behalf of Autozone Incorporated, request under Articles 9-9-2 of the Code for Preliminary and Final Site Plan Approval for the construction of a 6,446 square-foot building and associated site improvements on the 1.38 acres located at 1635 Penfield Road. The properties now are formerly owned by DDR, Panorama Plaza, LLC, and is Zoned General Business. Application number 14P-0006, SBL number 138.08-1-2.3. Joe, if you want to pull that away from the wall, you're welcome to, it's up to you.
I think it's fine there. Yell if it isn't. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Joe Ardieta of Vanguard Engineering, tonight representing Autozone for the site plan application at 1635 Penfield Road. And for those of you in the audience, that is the former, oh, it was a roadhouse grill, and it was a Guinness pub, and it was other iterations. Essentially, it's, when you drive into the Panorama Plaza from Penfield Road, it's the building on your left. Okay. Here's our proposed site plan. As stated previously, the access points remain the same as they are now. We propose no changes to any of the utility mains. We do, we will revise some of the water service and sanitary sewer service to relocate it into the back of the building. Stormwater, the existing site has no stormwater practices. In fact, it doesn't even have a storm sewer, other than two catch basins at the southern end of the site. Although this project does not meet DEC standards for a stormwater pollution prevention plan, we thought that we would take this opportunity to, one, increase the green space of the site by eliminating some of the parking, because Autozone does not need the 104 spaces that are on the site, and reallocate that space for stormwater management practices, which are two bio-retention ponds, one at the northwest corner and one at the southern end of the site. Now, it's not going to address every storm that could possibly come in, and it doesn't even address stormwater quantity to DEC standards. However, it does mitigate stormwater that comes off that site, which at present, just simply sheet flows off the site and into the plaza. So we will take, this, the bio-retention ponds will accommodate the, about 95% of the storms, up to, close to the 10-year storm. The 10-year storm, the ponds start to overflow into the catch basin. Located here. The 10-year storm, the ponds start to overflow into the catch basin, located here. And if I could have, we would have sized them even larger, but really, because we weren't, we don't have to meet DEC standards on this, what we tried to do was, take as much space as we could, fit the largest bio-retention facility in there that we could to address some water quantity, but really, the water quality, which for a project like this is, I feel more important, and improve the site in that manner. So that storm, that's essentially the stormwater program. As far as landscaping, we're increasing the site by four trees. At present, I think the site has, if you include the trees along Penfield Road, it has 10 trees, and which will stay. Construction, all of the curb within, within the lot itself is, will be removed and replaced. And we're also going to mill the pavement and repave the entire site. We're raising the building elevation? Well, we're sort of raising the building elevation. If you look at the building that's there now, you see that there are stairways and ramps that elevate the building. And this, I assume, was built to get above the floodplain elevation, which is at 273. What we're proposing to do is to place the building at elevation 273, and then floodproof it an additional two feet above the base flood elevation, which would make it comply with the town regulations. Now, the building plans, once submitted by Autozone's Architecture Department, will have to show floodproofing details to the building inspector's satisfaction that it meets the floodproofing standards of the town, which Autozone is prepared to do. That addresses one of the two comments I really want to address in the memo that was sent. The other one has to do with the building itself, the look of the building. The staff had some comments, and I issued a comment response letter late this afternoon, but it was probably so late, it probably didn't get a chance to get to. Among the things that Autozone has done in their, with the architecture of this building- Actually, let me change it around. Okay, this is the building elevation that was presented to the town in January. Autozone, to deviate, to try to accommodate the town's previous requests, Autozone deviated from their standard building by inserting split face, split face block. They segmented the roof line of the building, added a cornice and pilasters. And then they also changed to what they call is a, their standard alternative northeast color scheme. So when, when municipalities don't like their standard color scheme in the northeast, this is what they revert to. Really, this is what they've done, and I'd really like to get your comments as to if this is acceptable for the planning board, or if you'd like to see changes, if we can discuss that further.
Are you-
I'm done.
You're done?
Yes.
Okay. I think Jim, I think this is yours. You want to start up?
Yeah. So you're proposing to raise the pads so that the entire finished floor elevation is at 273?
Correct.
And then you're suggesting that the architect of record will be providing the details for floodproofing at all of the openings around the building?
Yeah. Because we're elevating, or we only have to go two feet, the only openings will be the doors. None of the windows are-
Yes, there are, there are four of those. One of those is an overhead door-
Mm-hmm.
For shipping and receiving, correct?
Understood.
Okay. So do you have any idea at all how they intend to comply with the regulations for flood-resistant design or floodproofing design at those openings?
I can't tell you that because I'm not an architect. And even if you gave me the architectural details to floodproof the building, I'm not sure I would understand them. I'm a site engineer. However, I do know that in order to receive a building permit, they're going to have to provide floodproofing details to the building inspector's satisfaction. So obviously, this, this building won't be built unless it's floodproofed properly and to the town's satisfaction.
Thank you.
Are there other buildings out there that have floodproofing like that, do you know?
Yeah, actually, they're actually incorporating elements, they're details for the floodproofing from a building that they floodproofed in Massachusetts. They said recently, I don't know when-
Panorama Plaza area.
No.
So they're all above that elevation?
Oh, you're talking about buildings outside of the Autozone industry?
Right. Just in the general area, that floodplain, are there other buildings that are at that elevation or below?
Oh, yeah. There are many buildings within Panorama Trail that are below the flood elevation. The fact that we're demolishing the existing building and constructing new, you know, requires us to meet the floodplain code. If an existing building is below the flood, the flood, base flood elevation, then what they'll, they'll get grandfathered. They'll be, they'll be able to go into that building, but they're just going to pay a lot of insurance. Especially these days, insurance has escalated dramatically. So really, Autozone wants to be out of the floodplain as well.
Joe, a question for you. I asked it before, I think, and, use the oil. Autozone accepts use the oil?
Yes. Actually, in fact, last time, at the last meeting, I thought that they did not. Now, the answer is that they will accept it, and they have a proprietary business that comes in and takes all of the oil from them. So they'll receive it from, from customers, store it, and then the, the other business, the third party comes and takes it away.
Which is a concern of mine, if not the whole board. I mean, because I've gone by several locations, and it does seem to be a problem with oil left and containers all around these buildings. So I don't know what the arrangement is, but it's, I don't think it's definitely acceptable if, you know, whatever kind of thing they got set up, but it's not working.
Well, I, I think it, it's feasible to enact as contingency of approval that no oil storage device could be placed outside the building. There's no location, there was no location given to us.
Okay.
And we, we have now designed three Autozone buildings, and that topic has never come up from Autozone as to a location to store, temporarily store, oil.
Right. So it's going to be addressed.
I may have been incorrect, but I actually assumed that, once I found out that they did in fact take oil from customers and then give it to a third party, that they stored it inside the building.
Find out definitely?
Yeah.
Okay. Because, like I say, I've driven by several locations throughout the county, and it's not the case.
Are these Autozone locations? Okay.
All right. If you want to, you know, I can tell you which ones later on. Also, a couple other questions. Sidewalks, sidewalks going to be front side around the building?
Yes. They are. They're in front and on the east and west sides of the building. The backside is the delivery portion, so they won't have a sidewalk. Also, the existing sidewalks along Penfield Road, what we propose to do there is, because the property line is so close, we're going to remove, and, and the existing condition of the curb there is really bad. So we're going to cut the curb off the sidewalks, and then mount new curb up against it, and then pave the new parking lot off of that. So the sidewalk stays, it'll have a new curb adjacent to it.
Have to go, the zoning for any variances at this time, if you are?
Autozone is weighing the possibility of going to the zoning board for assigned variance. They have not yet decided whether they're going to do it or not.
What about lighting? Parking lot lighting?
There was a lighting plan submitted to, in the site drawing package. They're proposing six light poles, and I think five new locations, and they're going to reuse one of the pole locations, and they're proposing LED lighting, which is now, which is quickly becoming the standard for commercial.
What about the hours of operation, things of that nature?
I don't know the specifics on the hours of operation, but I think it'll be a standard commercial enterprise. They're certainly not open 24 hours. I know there've been times where I needed car parts to start opening when it wasn't.
Are you using a current entrance and exit that's already in place?
Correct.
Or placing the curbs you want that area?
Yes.
And there's only the one means, right, to get in and out of the Autozone? Into that parking lot?
There are two. There's one at the southeast corner, adjacent to, I think, Burger King. And then there's one on the, right on the west side, which connects to the driveway entering-
That's the driveway?
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
I have one more question. Delivery schedule for products that come into the store?
I would not, I have not been given a delivery schedule specific, specifically for Autozone, but the delivery bay is in the south side of the building. There's, it's a very wide area, so there's a wide berth for vehicles to circulate around, delivery vehicles. We also are proposing a concrete pad, so the truck will be able to park parallel to the rear of the building and still maintain the 30-foot fire lane around the building. So instead of offloading into the, directly into the building, they're going to offload into the concrete pad just south and next to the overhead door, and then the equipment will be hauled in for a product.
Thank you. Joe, along the frontage, there are some trees.
Yeah.
I think they're honey locusts. And there's a couple gaps in those trees. Do you think you might be able to fill in two or three of those trees where they've probably died in the past, and there's a couple gaps?
If, well-
It would be in the right of way.
I think the, yeah, the question is that those, I think those trees are in the right of way.
Right.
That would, I think that would take a DOT permit in order to do so, correct?
You mean, we're expecting the right one?
Yeah. You know, I, I don't think it costs much for Autozone to add two trees. The problem is where they're going. I can inquire with New York State DOT if they would, if they would consider such, you know, an addition of two trees there, and specifically honey locusts. But I, I really wouldn't want the DOT permitting process, which I'm sure you all know-
No, I can understand that.
Can be very extensive.
If it can be done, that's all.
Yeah. And I can definitely check into the possibility and report back to the town.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak on this application? Okay. Your final thoughts, Joe?
Well, really, you know, I, I thought the biggest issue tonight was going to be possibly the, the look of the building. You know, we're looking for preliminary and final approval, and honestly, this plan was a result of the prior comments issued. And the Architecture Department at Autozone received, actually, a photograph of a building, an Autozone building in Naples, Florida, and they actually tried hard to emulate that, that style while changing the color scheme to the north, to the northeast color scheme. So when we received that comment, again, they were kind of confused. They thought that they had addressed it. So that, I guess, and the fact that I'm not the architect, and I'm-
Right.
I'm the layperson here. I have to go back to them and tell them, is this, is, this is the one, or do I want changes?
Discussions about that, generally speaking, we, we conduct during our work sessions.
Okay.
And we may or may not, unless the help of an architectural consultant-
Okay.
-on that.
Just to add to that, you are encouraged to stay, to listen to the board's deliberation. We try, our staff tries their best to capture the board's intent in the tabling resolutions, but it's definitely worthwhile staying to listen to deliberation yourself.
You know, that means I would have to miss out on my House of Cards episode, right?
No comment.
Okay.
Okay. That said, I guess we'll call this hearing closed. We're going to take a short, maybe five-minute, how much time do you guys need to get your PowerPoint set up? For the next, okay, about five minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. We're going to take a quick five-minute recess, and we'll reconvene, I guess, at 7:52 for the final public hearing of the evening. Okay, welcome back from our five-minute break. Katie, would, before I begin, for this next application, we've had two members that have asked to recuse themselves because they do some business with either the applicant or Walmart, or, so they're not sitting here anymore. But Katie, please proceed.
Public hearing application number two. Ashley Champion, Nixon Peabody LLP, 1300 Clinton Square, Rochester, New York, 14604. On behalf of DeMarco Bay Town Associates LLC and DeMarco Brant Point LLC, request under Articles 3-3-10, 8-8-2, and 9-9-2 of the Code for Preliminary and Final Subdivision and Site Plan and EPod Permit Approval for the Expansion and Redevelopment of the Existing Bay Town Plaza to Include 186,000 square foot Walmart Supercenter and Out Parcel shown on the submitted drawings prepared by Bergman Associates with associated improvements on 64.39 acres at 1970, 1994-B, and 1994-C Empire Boulevard. The properties now are formerly owned by the DeMarco Bay Town Associates LLC and DeMarco Brant Point LLC and its own general business and R-1-12. Application number 14P-0010, SBL numbers 093.02-1-13, 093.02-1-23.11, 093.02-1-24.997, and 093.02-1-25.11.
Wow. Think about that. That's probably the last time you have to read off all those numbers. Here.
Penfield.
For Penfield. Okay.
Good or sweet?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and remaining members of the planning board, members in the audience. My name is Paul Calucci. I'm the Vice President of Development and Construction for the DeMarco Group. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, presenting this application for a site plan and subdivision approval, and a lot of other stuff that Katie just read off that I won't repeat because she said it so much nicer than I possibly could. Along with me tonight here, on behalf of the applicant, is John DeMarco II, President and COO of the DeMarco Group, Tom Greiner, our legal counsel, attorney with Nixon Peabody, Mark Petrowski, professional engineer with Bergman Associates, the engineer of record for the project, and Gary McCamey, registered architect, here to speak on behalf of Walmart and their building architecture. Project is located in the northeast quadrant of the Bay Creek Empire Boulevard District, and the aerial that is shown on the slide outlines the project area with the green, the green highlighted line indicating the project boundary. I thought it would be fitting to briefly review the rezoning process. It's been a little over, or close to two years since we were before this board with this application. We concluded the process with the planning board, which culminated in a finding statement, which was adopted by this board, as indicated on the slide, May 15th of 2012. After a very thorough and exhaustive environmental review, the planning board adopted a plan, which we referred to as CPO2, and that became this, the planning board plan. After we concluded the process with the planning board, we, our application was referred to the town, the town board for the finalization of the rezoning resolution. That was concluded in December 19th of 2012, and the plan- That was concluded in December 19th of 2012, and the plan that was adopted therein, which was an evolution of CPO2, was a plan that we referred to as CP400. And I'll review these plans in in very brief fashion. But ultimately, the the goal of tonight is to demonstrate to this board and to the town that the plan that we are advancing, the plan we are basing the project development on, is 100% in compliance with the the town board rezoning resolution as well as the planning board finding statement. The plans, as I just mentioned, I just took the liberty of putting a couple of critical dimensions on here, and I apologize, it may not be very easy for the audience to to read these dimensions, but this is the plan, which was referred to as CPO2. And this plan outlines a couple of dimensions, which are indicated in red to the back of the Walmart, 340 feet and 420 feet to the adjoining residential boundary to the the south of the project. This plan, as you recall, included all the buffering and all of the mitigation necessary to to adequately mitigate the environmental concerns that were raised during the environmental review process. The Walmart positioned in this location, the existing Baytown Plaza here, the street of shops, leading to a town center. The next plan is the CP400 plan. This is the plan that the town board took a evolution of CPO2 and asked for some additional buffering, which resulted in a distance of 436 feet from the back of the Walmart to the residential properties to the east. That 420-foot dimension remained from the south side of the Walmart to the residential properties to the south, retaining the town center, the street of shops. This plan resulted in some needs to explore variances as it relates to overall parking ratio and parking stall size, and we'll get into that a little bit further as I go through the presentation. This is the plan that was submitted with the application on January 31st, and this is the C100 drawing or the site plan, overall site plan for the application. From this plan, we utilized it to develop a statement of compliance with the finding statement and rezoning resolution that was submitted along with our application. Essentially, we took that finding statement and we went point by point and explained how this plan complies with all of those requirements that were asked of us to successfully address environmental concerns. What you see here labeled in red and corresponds directly with the CP400 plan is we've were able to maintain that dimension from the back of the Walmart to the residential properties to the east of 439 feet, actually a slight increase over what was requested, and a distance of 420 feet from the south of the Walmart to the neighboring properties to the south. Also of note would be to point out that the 200 feet in this area of undisturbed naturally vegetated buffer is included in this plan. We don't show graphically the berm, but the wall that is proposed on top of the berm is delineated by this line feature here. Maintain the town center and street of shops extension, and essentially CP400 became the plan that we advanced for our development. Some of the relevant plan metrics are listed on this sheet, and this is just as it relates to the plan C100. The area that is to remain undeveloped or to ultimately be put into a conservation easement is in compliance with the finding statement in the town zoning board or town board zoning rezoning resolution, which is approximately 12 acres. This plan proposes a total buildout of 489,810 square feet or, excuse me, yes, square feet. The setback to the building, as I identified, on the site plan is 439, maintaining that buffer that was required. And essentially, all the other metrics that were required out of the CP400 plan have been incorporated. We are proposing a berm that will be higher than any other structure developed on the site in compliance with the finding statement. And as I mentioned, we have a parking ratio overall on the site of five parking spaces per thousand square feet, and we're proposing parking stall sizes varying from nine by 18, nine and a half by 18, and nine by 20. And those are interspersed throughout the site in areas where they really make sense, and I can go over those when we get to the the overall site plan. This plan also proposes open space in the amount of 31.4%. As I alluded to, we are proposing, and we have made application for, excuse me, and will be pursuing variances, area variances for the project. We're on the zoning board agenda next week. Area variances that we're going to be pursuing include overall plaza parking ratio, whereas 5.4 parking spaces per thousand are required, we're proposing five parking spaces per thousand square feet. Parking stall size, nine by 20, whereas we're proposing, as I alluded to, parking stall sizes smaller than those required by code. And based on the way the planning board has historically interpreted the open space portion of the town code, we are pursuing a variance for open space in the amount of 31.4%, whereas 35% is required by code. I should note that the existing Baytown Plaza has an existing variance in place allowing open space in the amount of 27%. So we're actually reducing that that size of that variance that'll be required by redeveloping this plaza. Lastly, we are and have made a application for a special permit for the outdoor display for the Walmart parcel. So here's a site plan laid into an aerial showing the overall context of the surrounding neighborhood. And as I mentioned, there's a couple of items to note here that are not represented, but they are shown on the site plan that was submitted with the application. The outdoor display area for Walmart is going to be tucked up in this area, and it's out of the way of any critical drive lanes. The parking spaces, again, there was an exhibit submitted with the application. It's actually in the engineer's report. But essentially, the the smaller parking spaces are going to be on the periphery of the Walmart lot. Nine by 18s would be outbound. Essentially, those spaces that aren't turned over as frequently, the the more high-volume turnover spaces will be nine and a half by 18s, and there's also nine by 20s around the perimeter. And in the town center, as the exhibit shows in a lot better detail than I can point out here, there's a mix of nine by 20s and nine by 18s and nine and a half by 18s in the This slide is taken from another plan that was submitted along with the engineer's report, and it's it's used to represent the aesthetic elements that we're proposing within the project. And starting, I guess clockwise from the top and and moving around, we're showing some contextual elevations of what the town center will look like, and I'll get into a little bit more detail about the architecture proposed for the town center. A visual depiction in this area of what the the wall on top of the berm is going to look like. We've submitted some material to the town planning department for evaluation, and we intend to continue discussions with them on what this wall will look like. It will be a decorative wall. It will have aesthetic appeal on both sides of that wall. Down in this lower corner are what we call our site amenities that I'll go into a little more detail later. Benses, pedestrian scale lighting, some of the hardscape features, examples of the finished architecture in the plaza that I'll I'll go into a little bit more in some continuing as I continue on. And then, again, over here on the left, some of the additional hardscape elements. So we started with renovating the architecture in Baytown just over three years ago, and we really started with the the monument sign that's out front. If we can think back, this is what that sign looked like. And the very first piece of architecture that we introduced as to what was going to be proposed in the plaza, we started with at the road. And we introduced the stylistic architecture, and from there, we developed facade plans for renovations to the facades of the storefronts. And we started from the north side of the plaza, renovating the the architecture of the facades of the plaza. Here's an example of the the new architecture that's been installed. We raised the canopy, drawing more natural light into the stores, really creating a much better shop space and more inviting for pedestrian scale. We're in the process of pulling the sidewalk out, and we've received approval from this board to for a modification to the original site plan approval to add an additional six feet of stamped concrete on the the sidewalk so that we create just a much more inviting pedestrian scale along these buildings. On the south side of the plaza, an example of what the architecture looked like. And then, post renovation, again, same features, raising the canopy. In this instance, we actually removed some columns so that there's better visibility and a much more welcoming atmosphere for the shop owners. Then the last piece that we implemented was what we refer to as a cut through, which was really the focal point of the the last site plan approval we received here. And we concluded the cut through of of tops and grand opened that with a ribbon cutting ceremony and welcomed our first tenant into that new space, which was Planet Fitness right around Labor Day of last year. And, you know, really focusing on, again, a much enhanced and improved pedestrian scale with site amenities, including bike racks, as you can see in the photo here. So we have some bike racks. Little tough to see with the lights on, but there's there's benches along here, stamped concrete, really warm and inviting shop spaces, a mix of different types of awnings, pedestrian scale decorative lighting, gently articulating storefronts, really lending itself to a pleasing environment. Textured crosswalks, and again, that that stamped concrete continuing across the storefronts in another example of view from a different angle. So here's where I'm going to lead you into what we're proposing for the future. And this is on the left, we see what we proposed with our computer simulation of what the architecture could look like. And on the right, you see post renovation, what the the finished product was built out and and how it looks. And it really it shocks me to think that we developed those those elevations two or three years ago in a computer simulated model and developed construction plans off of those, and we're able to to deliver something so so similar to what we envisioned, and we're really pleased with the way that came out. Submitted with the application were elevations for what the future town center buildings could look like. While we are seeking preliminary and final site plan approval, we're really focusing on the Walmart portion of the application. That is the portion of the site that we do have an actual building footprint. We do have actual elevations for the Walmart, and that is a portion that we're going to advance first. What we're looking for on the town center is really an overall approval on the aesthetic element of what we're going to introduce and really building envelopes. So we envision that we're coming back to you for subsequent approvals for finalizing each of these individual buildings as we develop them, and we finalize the specific components of each, including, for instance, what where the trash receptacles will be, you know, where are the actual entrances on the buildings? Where are the exact utility points of connection? We'll come back for subsequent site plan approval at that time. But what we're showing here in this slide, our views on the top left from the very north end of the plaza, looking back down through that cut through to the south end of the plaza, and what the buildings we envision will look like. In this case, we're looking from this direction over to this building here with this facade, essentially looking at the west facade of one of the buildings in the town center. And then from here, looking probably from the Walmart parking lot out to the town center on the east or the west facade of of one of the buildings there. And then this would be looking from where Brant Point Drive comes in and turns in front of the Walmart, looking back into the town center. So we wanted to give an example and a representation of what we're envisioning the architecture to look like, and those elements and those amenities that I showed you on the hardscape and the landscape is what we envision continuing right through with the same stamped concrete, same type of pedestrian scale lighting, et cetera. This piece I'm going to turn over to Gary McCamey. He's going to talk a little bit about the elevations for Walmart.
Thank you, Paul. Good evening. As Paul said, I'm Gary McCamey. I'm the Design Principal with Bergman Associates here in Rochester. I'm here really just to present the design aesthetics of the proposed 185,000 square foot plus Walmart store. The building, as you can see, consists of many components. And basically, to simplify it, if you start, look at the upper elevation, starting on the left end, we have our garden center entrance. The the next element over with the curve is our home and pharmacy entrance. The middle is our brand identity. To the right, we have the grocery store entrance. Then to the far right, we have the pharmacy drive-through. On the back of the store, which is hard to see from this elevation, but we do have the enclosed dock that Paul was discussing, where we have an exterior wall, we have a roof over it, and obviously, this is there to help with the sound attenuation that of the trucks, which actually, they don't sit in idle, but some of the compressors of the refrigerated trucks may, so that's why we address that issue. You know, along with the the many design goals we have for the project, there were really just two that I need to address here tonight. One was we tried to meld the design of the Walmart with the architectural vernacular that Paul just displayed of of the recently renovated and open portion of the project. The other part was to take that typical big box retail in-your-face kind of elevation and break it down into more of a human scale. And you can see from the from the top elevation that we've really achieved this by taking changes in materials, changes in colors, changes in textures, changes in the shapes, the the basic change of materials, change of height, and change of the planer surface. So really, this took that, you know, what is a fairly large building, it helps bring this down. We've also used a lot of elements along the sidewalks, like awnings and, you know, the openings, the doorways and things, and all this really does help bring that down. As far as the bringing it into that vernacular of the existing center, we've stuck with the earth tones that were established in that portion. We're utilizing a lot of the same materials. We're utilizing some of the EFS. We're utilizing the masonry. We've also introduced some other products, such as a Trespa panel for the brand wall. We have some other masonry products. We have a textured precast product that we'd be using with exposed aggregate on that. But the, you know, one of the things, I mean, this is kind of it in a nutshell, but one of the things I would like to point out, Walmart, they're very, very sustainability-minded. I mean, you know, one of the buzzwords now is is being green, being sustainable, reducing your carbon footprint. These guys really, if they wanted to have these stores lead certified, could do it. It's just a matter of basically why spend the money to do it when you you know, you know what you're doing. But we, you know, we do this by by having the the products that are in that are built in the construction materials. They come from a certain distance, you know, manufactured close to the site. We utilize high-efficiency HVAC units. We utilize these low-water toilet facilities. We have LED lighting in the parking lot. We have LED lighting in inside the store. We have vast usage of skylights that are tied into sensors that when the sun comes out, the lights dim. When the sun, you know, clouds come out, store brightens up. So really, you know, basically, we have a product we think that is going to be just a big asset to the community, and it fits really well into the design of the shopping center.
So we we're also proposing, as you probably recall, through the environmental environmental review process. process, we had a coordinated review with Monroe County DOT and New York State DOT, and out of that was dictated to us offsite improvements that we need to make. And I'm going to run through these real quickly, and then I'll show you, hopefully we can see on some subsequent slides, some of the conceptual plans that we're developing that we've sent into the town for these offsite improvements. But we'll start at the top with a connection to Sovereign Drive. That comes with it, a signal at Creek Street. And really, the goal out of that component of the project was to eliminate left turns at the existing Baytown Creek Street entrance. As we know, the left turns in has always been prohibited. The left turns out are allowed today, but come with it some difficulty with queuing maneuvers and making that left turn onto Creek Street. The project proposes improvements to the existing Baytown Main Plaza entrance, and that would include an additional left turn lane out. Right now, it's two lanes out, two lanes in. It would be dual lefts out and a right. Also with the project, we will be granting easements to the frontage parcels on Empire Boulevard so that they would have access to a proposed signal both at Brant Point Drive and the Main Plaza entrance. And then lastly, we're, subsequent to the review of New York State DOT, we're taking and we're widening Empire Boulevard from Brant Point Drive to the Webster Town Line and essentially developing a two-way continuous left turn lane throughout that portion of the project. So as I mentioned, and I apologize, this slide is slightly tough to see what's going on here. But this shows Sovereign Drive in the southwest corner of the plaza. And our application proposes a connection through an easement to the existing Baytown Plaza and Sovereign Drive and a signal at Sovereign. Also of note here would be maintaining a right in, right out on the existing Baytown Plaza Creek Street entrance. We met with the landowners on Sovereign Drive, all the parties who have interest in that private road. We met with them last week. We shared with them our plans for the connection. We shared with them essentially the finding statement, and what was culminated through that review was the request by the town in Monroe County DOT and New York State DOT to make a connection to Sovereign Drive. They expressed some concerns. We've subsequently received written correspondence from each of the property owners related to their concerns, and they've asked, in part, that we have a meeting to continue discussions with the town president at that meeting. And ultimately, some of the material we received just today is a little bit to digest, so we need a little bit of time to go through that and determine what our next course of action is as it relates to Sovereign. As I said, the Main Plaza entrance at Empire Boulevard, receiving a dual left turn lane and some channelizing in this area, essentially maintaining the inbound movement, stop controlled in these directions, free flow in, and it would be stop here, stop, and stop here. This is representing the additional left turn lane. We accomplish that by widening to the north within land that we control as the applicant. Again, this is on the very north side of the project, showing the connection to the frontage parcels as we develop the town center portion and to the east of their rear property lines. And then Brant Point Drive being widened to accommodate the lanes that are necessary there, one inbound, two lefts, and a right out. And then also shown along, the Empire Boulevard is the two-way continuous left turn lane as it's widened from Brant Point to the Webster Town Line. These are conceptual plans that are developed, we've sent to the town. They're the basis of where we start our offsite work permits with New York State DOT and Monroe County DOT. As we advance those to further level, we'll be sending them both to Monroe County DOT, New York State DOT review agencies, as well as the town. This, I figured I'd conclude with this slide. I have no more to present to you. We're open for questions, as you see fit.
Okay. Paul, thank you.
You're welcome.
I should point out that two of our board members are absent tonight, and that leaves us without a quorum here. So this hearing will remain basically open. And all of this is being taped, and they will be watching it on either a DVD or on the web or, but they will definitely witness and watch the entire.
You don't want to have me back to go through it again.
Public hearing, correct. No, I'm not saying that at all. Okay. Do you guys have any questions, comments?
I just got a couple. Paul, now, is this the size of this Super Walmart, or is it going to be, this is the same size that we originally discussed, or is it smaller, larger?
Yeah, we, during the whole rezoning process and while we were doing the environmental review, we'd always had this footprint with, over three years, Terry, as you might imagine, retailer changes slightly, so it's inch for inch, little different. But we'd always refer to it as a 180,000 square foot Walmart. When you take into account all of the square footage represented on Walmart and their garden center, we've totaled that actual square footage on the site plan today. And don't quote me exactly, but as Gary said, it's 185,000-ish. So not, not a different prototype, not a different store. It's just when they're in, you know, overall planning process, they refer to their protos as 180K and different levels. So this is the 180K proto that was reviewed during environmental.
It's similar to any other ones in Monroe County, size-wise, you know?
It's, actually, it's a little bit bigger than anything else. The one that would be closest to it, but actually is about 30,000 feet smaller.
Can you use the microphone, Gary? Please, thanks.
As far as new stores go, the closest would be the new one in Greece, which is about 155,000. The store in Henrietta is closest in size, but obviously, it's a much older proto. But when you're looking at square footage, Henrietta would be closest.
Andy, what they're going to do with the old building presently, if this gets approved? Deal Walmart?
Yeah, that will fall back to us, the developer, and we have plans for retenanting that with several junior anchors.
Your pointer, can you just show where the existing Walmart is?
Sure. Today Walmart's in a 121,000 square foot general merchandise. They do not have grocery in the store, and they are right in this area.
When you were referring to the display items for Walmart, all the outdoor furniture, things like that?
It's mainly garden supplies, and I guess, again, Gary can answer that, but outdoor display would be located in this area. Seasonal, from what I understand, it's September through, or I'm sorry, May through September. So it's the.
Seasonal flowers, for the most part. We have, we have an area around the side of the building where they put the bag goods, like, you know, fertilizer, seed and the like, but that's mainly the flowers.
Okay. Could you go over your timeline for construction?
Sure.
Really for, you know, actually for the whole thing? Sure. We submitted a schedule, an overall schedule with the application, and I don't have it right in front of you, but I developed it. I'll do my best to kind of hit it point by point. Assuming we conclude the site plan approval process, and we're able to, we would like to advance the site work portion of this as early as the end of third quarter this year. Looking to deliver a pad to Walmart in the end of, the beginning of fourth quarter this year. So they would commence construction and potentially open their store October of 2015. And all of the site work would be done at once as it relates to the mass earthwork and grading and development of infrastructure. So all of the subsurface improvements would happen all at once. We would do all the site finishes as necessary, including the offsite improvements and the connections around Walmart, the berm and the wall. And this portion would likely be stabilized with a crusher run or stone material, and we would wind up holding out, doing any building construction until we get enough pre-leasing done. And then we would come back here with a subsequent application for site plan approval for individual buildings or a series of buildings if we get enough pre-leasing done to generate or to build buildings at that time. So ultimately, the goal would be to commence construction this year, open Walmart next year, and we would have to have all of the improvements and mitigation in place that would be required from an environmental standpoint, traffic, stormwater, et cetera, by the time Walmart's open, Walmart open, which would be October 2015.
Okay. That leads me, I guess, to my next question. Could you go over, I don't, could you go over the buffering and, you know, what's proposed, what it would look like between this property and the adjacent neighbors and all of various.
Sure.
Sides?
I'll start at the east. So here's the, actually, the rear property line to the residence on Jewelberry is right where my laser pointer is now. The buffering begins there with 200 feet of undisturbed natural vegetation left in place. From that 200-foot line, we start with the creation of the berm, which the berm varies in height as it moves around the project because, speaking of the height of the berm is relative to the surrounding area, but in general, the berm is continuous in height across the back of the Walmart, such that it, along with the wall that will be on top of it, which is an eight-foot wall, is taller than both the Walmart and any other feature in the development, including light poles. On the west side of the wall and on the berm, we will be proposing some landscaping, some trees planting. Same thing on Brant Point Drive, as a berm works its way around the north side of the Walmart, it starts to drop in elevation, and it ends at a rate about where my laser pointer is now. The wall continues from this point all the way around and to the very southeast corner behind the existing Walmart. So we're adding buffering even where no buffering exists today, behind the existing Walmart. So that Walmart was there, neighbors built behind it. We're now, as part of this application, offering this as additional buffering to residents. Did that answer your question?
So 200 feet to the east of where the buffer is will be completely undisturbed zonal, remain in the state that it currently is?
Correct.
And the fact that the wall is higher in elevation than any of the lighting poles should help with any light trespass?
Yeah.
On neighboring properties and?
That was really.
So on.
That was really the idea of the development of the berm and the addition of the wall on top of it was simply for a line of sight as it relates to not noise, but being able to visually see into the site mainly for light glare. The lights we're proposing are full cutoff, as Gary alluded to, Walmart does LED. Our area lights will be similarly LED. You're very familiar with the new style that's out there. They're not shoebox anymore, they're the flat panels. We're proposing lights no taller than 30 feet in height.
Well, describe the visual impact of the wall and the berm on the east side? So let's say you're in a residence on Jewelberry, you're in your second story bedroom, and you look out the back window, what do you see?
That's, that's tough to answer right now because what they'll see is 200 feet of very thick natural vegetation. Leaf off will slightly be different than leaf on, of course, so this time of year is probably a good time to go out here with our partners in the Penfield Planning Department and actually identify with our plan. We now have, this whole site is modeled, so we can go out there with a GPS control and say, all right, here we are, here's a limit of disturbance. And we can raise up an orange sign and invite someone to see what they could see from the neighboring side. We've always maintained, there is a path that's been here, so it's relatively easy to identify and find. What they would see, worst-case scenario, is the backside of a berm that's going to be vegetated with wildflowers. Really, it's a no-mow, no-maintenance area because it's on the backside of the plaza. And then the wall will be a decorative wall. We've, we've shown the planning board during the, during the environmental review, some options of what that could look like. It could look like a stacked stone, it could look like a lot of different applications that we could, we could use. My assumption is that they're not going to see it, that the 200 feet of natural vegetation is going to make it impossible to see any detail on that wall.
Okay.
Just, yeah, go ahead.
Paul, I think I drove through the street of Shaftes there, not too long ago. If you go, like, north towards Empire, there was like a big gate.
Right here.
And they, yeah. And it went, the gate was open, kind of like the road stopped, it was kind of dirt, and then it kind of took me someplace. What's it going to be, all asphalt eventually, paved out to?
Yeah, so Terry, what you saw was, this used to be the Ukrainian home, and it had a building that was right about here. And this, this portion, as it butts up against Empire Boulevard, or Brant Point Drive, is the old Ukrainian home parking lot. When we completed the cut through, we actually created this area that you get a rough idea of what the town center is going to look like. That's almost to the foot of what this area that's shown in between these buildings, we're calling it the town center, looks like. And today, there is pavement connecting to the former Ukrainian home parking lot on both the east and west side, and we have it striped and signed such that people, should they want to have access to a signal today, can, can get there. And just starting to develop those traffic patterns in a very relaxed manner without a lot of shopping pressure. So ultimately, before we open a Walmart or add any square footage here, we'll have a signal here.
That part will be finished when the construction starts in the back, you know? What's kind of a timeline with that? Because it kind of like leads you out to?
Yeah, I would say by the time we are ready to open Walmart and all of their site finishes will be done in their entirety, we would be doing all of this mass earthwork at the same time, and there's utilities that need to go through here. We have subsurface stormwater management in both the town centerpiece and the Walmart piece. This area would be graded off in its entirety, and this would be likely paved with a connection to Brant Point. And this would be, um, likely paved with a connection to Brant Point Drive. So that shoppers can, um, have access to the Street of Shops. There's obviously the need to have the connection into Walmart. And we want to leave that portion of the town center. It sits in the middle of our project. We want it to have some sense of connection to Brant Point, some sense of connection through the, the shops. And, and ultimately, we would probably finish it off the area of pavement with a split rail fence so that there's not errant traffic or errant parking or any activities out of where we want them to, to?
I wasn't sure if they're going to finish that particular area now that the Street of Shops was all complete, basically looks beautiful. I didn't know if you guys were going to finish that roadway or whatever you were going to make it there before you, you know, you started that project in the back since the Street of Shops is, is open, right?
Correct.
I mean, right now, if people want to lease it.
Yep.
You have cross-access easements and to allow cross-access from the properties, uh, to the west on Empire Boulevard?
Yeah, as part of our application and what will be on the final filed subdivision map would be, demonstrating the cross-access granted to these parcels so that they could make connection. We, we, we aren't going to propose those connections ourselves because we don't know where they want them to be. As they come in with the need to connect, we'll work with each of these individual property owners. Or if someone was to have a, a, an application for site plan approval on one of these parcels that differed than their current configuration, they would, they would probably want to connect in a different location than we would just make it for them.
Okay, could you go through, um, deliveries? The path a, a truck will take?
Sure.
To make deliveries to the, to the Walmart?
Inbound traffic into Brant Point, around to this loading dock and back out. If they needed to get to this loading dock, they would similarly come in this direction, back in and out. And we actually demonstrated this with, um, at the town board approval on CP 400 with actually just using auto turn on that plan that made it into the final rezoning resolution. That same ability for, for a truck to access loading docks, uh, on either side exists with this plan. The, go ahead.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but the, the parking spots on the southeast corner, will they pose any problem for, yeah, right, right there for trucks pulling around and, and trying to back in?
They will not.
Okay, so a truck could come in without, say it's Christmas Eve or something and they need to deliver more tinsel or something. They can come in and, and?
Yeah, they won't, this dock won't be accessed from a truck moving this way. This dock would be accessed from a truck moving in this way, backing up and then out. And all of these maneuvers have been evaluated. The parking is actually with, uh, finished with, and striping rather than a actual raised concrete or curb so that the trucks actually can make that maneuver.
About, uh, compressors for, um, the refrigeration and freezer units in the grocery store, where are they located?
I'm going to invite Gary back up to answer that one.
There's one main machine house and it sits right there.
Top units?
The rooftop, well, no, that's, that's the compressor house for the, uh, for the refrigeration systems in the grocery store, sits on that end. Now, the refri, the, um, the? It's on, no, it's on the roof. And it's, it is in a lot, it's a tra, it's like a, a trailer type unit, so it's all?
On the roof?
It's, yes, on the roof, self-contained unit. Then the mechanical units are just scattered?
And that's below the, I don't, that's below the height still of the berm and the fence and all that?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
And this has a rear parapet?
The block?
What are the proposed hours of operation for this Walmart?
Twenty-four seven.
What about hours of deliveries?
The, the deliveries, to my understanding, aren't limited to certain hours. They're, they're on a, an as-needed basis based upon Walmart's overall logistics plan. Um, we do have a property maintenance agreement with the town in place for this project, which limits the hours of certain activities, but deliveries are, are not one of them.
What about the parking, has that all been approved by the town board? Size that was proposed and the number?
Those are, um, variance, area variances that were ma, we've made application for with the, the zoning board. And we will be appearing before that board next week. It, it should be noted to this board that the, the reason we're pursuing those area variances for parking ratio and parking stall size is a evolution of the planning board plan to the CP 400 town board plan, which really took and compressed the overall development and, and put all of the green space to the rear. So as a result of that, we were a little challenged with how we can develop the site on the available land left. So, um, one of the recommendations on the rezoning resolution was that we, as an applicant, explore reduced parking ratios. We, as an applicant, re, explore reduced parking stall size as a means to minimize the impacts from the, the adjoining properties and provide as close to a 400-foot buffer as practical. And we've demonstrated that on this plan, that, that we were able to achieve that. So as you, as you look at the, the project, um, Walmart has, obviously, the way we developed it, certain parks that are obvious in relation to their building. And then there's certain parking spaces that are obvious in relation to the town center. And then, of course, Baytown Plaza has, just separated by the positions of the building, its own, uh, parking ratios. The parking ratios vary from parcel to parcel. Walmart's is in the neighborhood of four per thousand. The Baytown Plaza existing is about 4.7 per thousand. The town center is about 11 per thousand. So overall, when you blend it, we have a parking ratio of 5.02 per thousand square feet as proposed.
Now, that, I guess, begs a question for other sites for Walmarts. What, what have they found to be their ideal parking ratio? Is the four spots per thousand adequate for their operations?
It's my understanding, yes, that they've, they've been party to this review throughout the whole process with us and that they've seen this plan. They've evaluated this market, they've evaluated other stores in this market or in the surrounding market. And from a, from an overall parking standpoint, Walmart will go, it's my understanding, as low as four per thousand.
What's their normal and what's their desired?
Their desired?
As low as, what's, what's their?
Their desired, um, is four per thousand. They'll, they will attempt to meet town code if, say if a town code has five per thousand, they'll build extra parking spaces to meet that code. But as an operator, doing their studies and reviewing how parking spaces equate the sales, they've settled into a, a known need for four per thousand.
Excuse me. How about, um, let's talk a little bit about property maintenance agreements. Uh, you're going to end up with several different owners, um, of sites. There are agreements in place with the town, uh, for property maintenance as to, all right, where does somebody's responsibilities drop off and the other one pick up? Is that all?
Ultimately?
How will that work?
Yeah, ultimately, there'll be, um, what we call an REA, or reciprocal easements agreement and an, and an operating agreement over the whole plaza that all of the, the, the owners of interest will subscribe to. So, you know, who's doing the snow plowing? Who's doing the landscape maintenance? Who's doing, um, parking lot sweeping? These are all agreed to in a document that's filed, um, with the property. The, the rules and hours of operation will meet the towns, the agreement we currently have in place with the town as it relates to, to the maintenance activities on the property. So there really will be three owners of the, of the property. Two of them are DeMarco Group interests. So the town center and Baytown Plaza will be owned by the DeMarco Group. And Walmart will have its lease over a separate parcel that will ultimately still be owned by the DeMarco Group. So they're just, just different entities, but all controlled by, by us.
Okay, um?
Can more specifically answer your, your question? There's, there's actually three parcels with two owners. So DeMarco Baytown Associates owns?
John, do you mind introducing yourself?
I'm John DeMarco, owner of the?
Thanks.
Baytown Plaza, one of the owners. But, uh, DeMarco Brant Point is going to be a parcel that is owned by, uh, us and leased to Walmart. That'll be one parcel, one owner. Baytown Plaza and the town center will be owned by one entity, DeMarco Baytown Associates. It's two parcels, one owner. So there'll be, um, a, an agreement, a maintenance agreement with the town for Baytown and the town center and applicable rules for operating multi-tenanted. And then there could be a sep, excuse me, a separate agreement for rules to operate just the single tenant Walmart parcel. So there'd be two specific maintenance agreements. And the one for the, the Brant Point parcel, it does not exist yet, but would be part of the site plan approval. And the Baytown would be expanded over to the town center, probably use the same agreement, just expand it over to include the town center space.
Okay, um, would anyone in the audience care to, uh, speak on this or make comments? Yes, ma'am? If you could come up and, uh, one question or request that I would, uh, ask everyone is to, when you get up, please give us your name, your address, and address your questions to the board and not to the applicant. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Jennifer Doherty. I'm an attorney with Phillips Lidle. We represent Sovereign Acquisition Limited Partnership. Everyone here knows them as their DBA, Uncle Bob Storage. They're located immediately south of the existing Baytown Plaza property line. As Mr. Calucci had mentioned earlier, DeMarco Group had reached out to some of the property owners along Sovereign Drive just last week. So we've had a lot of information and a lot of data and a lot of materials to look at. As currently proposed, Sovereign is here to say that they're in opposition to the proposed project, including any access way along Sovereign Drive or through Sovereign's property. And, um, just to try and give you a reference point, if I've got this right, right here is Sovereign's office and these are Sovereign's storage units. The proposed, um, access road will cut across Sovereign's existing property and then loop up Sovereign Way and go to the light here at Creek Street. As you can see today, Sovereign Drive ends at the edge of Sovereign's property, which is right at the bottom of the slide right here. The proposal would extend that through and connect to Baytown. As we understand it, um, this private way or private road is owned by, or is operated under two separate easements. The first easement covers the property that goes from Creek Street to the edge of Sovereign's property. And that's a 30-foot easement. The second easement covers from the edge of Sovereign's property across Sovereign's property to Baytown. And that's only a 24-foot wide easement. So we looked at those easements and we've analyzed both of them. And we don't see any legal support that would allow Baytown Associates or Brant Point, DeMarco Brant Point LLC to use those easements to get access down Sovereign Drive and across the Sovereign property. And we just wanted to point out a few things that, um, in New York, easements are strictly construed. They're defined by the intent of the parties when the easement is made and granted. And they're meant to benefit the parcel that are considered at the time of the easement. At the time that the 24-foot easement was made, this parcel was not part of the mix. It wasn't owned by Bay, well, it's still not owned by Baytown. And wasn't included within the intent of the parties that originally constructed that easement. So the, for shorthand, and I have all of my comments in a written submittal with diagrams that help explain this, which I just finished earlier this afternoon and brought with me. So I apologize that I didn't get it in earlier. But for shorthand, I've used 30-foot easement, meaning from Creek Street to the edge of So, Sovereign's property. And then the 24-foot easement meant to signify across Sovereign's property. The 30-foot easement is designed specifically to provide access to the owners of the lots in the original subdivision plan that are shown as BR 1A and BR 1B, which include only the properties that are here along Sovereign Way. So that access is designed to help those properties that are along Sovereign Way. As far as we can tell, DeMarco and Baytown Associates aren't any part to that easement or allowed as part of that private road, um, agreement. The second easement, which by sex sovereign's property, goes from Sovereign Drive to the Baytown. And the express language states that it may be used to benefit Baytown and calls out a specific tax ID number, which is this parcel. So to enlarge and extend and expand that easement to include all of this would be far beyond what would be, be allowed by New York State courts and based on the existing case law. And so we would oppose any site plan or off-site improvements that would include those types of, um, improvements. Turning then to the site plan conditions, we noted that, um, of course, the planning board is charged with reviewing site plans. And the January 31st letter from Nixon, um, that was drafted by Mrs. Champion, had noticed that, um, had included in there the finding statements and went through, just as Mr. Calucci mentioned, and identified how these things would be addressed and put in there that as part of the conditions of the site plan approval, DeMarco and Baytown would accept a signal at Creek Street and the expansion of Sovereign Drive through Sovereign's property. Um, we respectively permit, submit to this board that those kinds of off-site improvements cannot be conditioned as part of the site plan approval. We have, um, reviewed some of the existing New York State law on that point and included references in our submittal that say that including or requiring an improvement on a neighboring property is not allowed as part of the site plan condition as this is a private road and privately owned and operated. We therefore oppose any conditions that would be included in the site plan approval that require off-site improvements along Sovereign Drive and of course, across Sovereign's property. In addition to those two, what I would consider purely legal arguments, we think there's some significant safety concerns that would be associated with providing, um, public access through here and across Sovereign's property. As I mentioned, Sovereign's office is right here, the storage units are here. So a customer will come in, visit the office, and then they'll jump in a, um, golf cart or walk across with a sovereign representative to go look at the, the units, the potential units that they might rent. Or they'll come in the office and purchase packing materials and then come across there. According to the estimates provided in, um, the submittals from Baytown and DeMarco, at peak hours, they've moved all of the turns from here down to the Creek Street Sovereign Drive entrance, which could be a, a total count of approximately 300 cars during peak hours. That's a lot of traffic on a 24-foot wide piece of pavement that's going to cut an operating business right in half. It will raise some significant safety concerns, both for pedestrians, customers, and then people that would be traveling here along this roadway. I note that the town of Pembroke's design specifications for a, um, I note that the Town of Pembroke's design specifications for a minor street requires a 20-foot wide paved area and a 60-foot right-of-way. Clearly, even if there could be, it could be argued that that 24-foot access easement would be, would allow that road, there's not enough to have a legal right-of-way. That's for a minor street. A collector's street requires 24 feet of pavement and a 70-foot right-of-way. And even if we were to call it a commercial drive and it were to remain privately owned, that underneath the town's design manual requires 30 feet of pavement. And there's, it's not allowed, even under any construction, would it be allowed to have a 30-foot paved drive there? So, we think that creates a significant issue, and we think it creates, by the mere fact that it can't even meet town specification, raises some serious safety concerns. We also note that this conflict here with cars and pedestrians will be during all hours. People will come into this plaza and it could be any time of day, and I don't think people headed to the Walmart are necessarily going to be expecting that someone's going to be walking back and forth here. And I think that creates a real culmination of a lot of issues that could cause a serious problem. We also note that, and I know that projects evolve, but we have very little understanding of what is even proposed here. Right now, it's still shown as conceptual plans. We just learned last week that, you know, this would be coming through the property. So, as proposed, we object to any off-site improvements along Sovereign Drive that would turn this into a public road. Does the board have any questions?
At the moment, no.
I'll make sure that I leave copies of my submittals and-
I think I got a email late, maybe five o'clock or something today. I thought about printing it, but it was 53 pages and-
That's my submittal. I brought you a hard copy. I, I didn't realize it was a digital-based town, though that could be changing, I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, any other, any other comments from the audience? Yes, sir? Come on up.
How are you? My name's John Demetzer. I live at 90 B. Canills Drive, Penfield. Very excited about this store going in. I've been hearing about it for the past year and a half now, and I've seen what's been going on over at Baytown. It's beautiful. You know, these new facades on these stores and these plazas is just beautiful. And I'm in favor of it, and I'd like to see it go up as soon as possible. I mean, it's just, where else can you go? Get a steak and buy your son a bike, you know what I mean? These stores are amazing, you know? And it'd be nice to have one near me. You know, we've been going to Massedon. That's pretty much the closest one for us, the superstar. That's a beautiful store over there, too. So, yeah, we're in favor for it and anxious to see it happen and the, the progress in the plaza and beautifying that plaza is, it's coming along and it's looking real nice than what it has been, you know? What an improvement, it's just looks real nice. In favor for it.
Great.
That's about it.
Thank you. Any other comments, sir? Come on up.
My name's Jim Mathers. I live in Creek Hill Lane, Town of Penfield. And I guess I'd like to get my focus tonight back on traffic a little. Going to say that I really think the Town Council and this board really needs to put out a big-picture document of what the phase gates are with this project. And, you know, I, I went to one other hearing before the rezoning, but a little confused about what the phase gates are and what the decision process is and the overall picture. But, I'd just like to say a few words on traffic. Excuse me. The water fountains not working. Tonight, and that's going to be my focus from here on out, is to talk about the traffic in this area. I consider it a disaster today, the Empire Boulevard Creek and Bay intersection. It's one of the few I try to avoid with, like the plague, and I've seen the traffic that's now down in the Webster area with development. And it's a prime consideration here. I'm no, not anti-development, or I am anti-Walmart, but that's insignificant. I just think this project cannot go forward based on the impact of traffic to the area. Now, I'll read here from the, it's called Exhibit E., the Statement of Compliance. And this, this comment was in the traffic section of that document. As a condition of site approval, the applicant agrees to comply with the above requirements. The applicant is in the process of preparing off-site improvement plans for submission to New York State DOT and Monroe County DOT. A copy of the off-site improvement plans will be provided to the Town of Penfield Planning Department upon completion. The applicant will comply with requirements of New York State DOT and MC DOT in connection with the aforementioned items. And I guess I'll just leave it with two questions. Is, when will these off-site plans, improvement plans, I guess they're called, be available? And what will they be placed on the town website for public viewing? And relative to that, the, the big question, I think, what people need to understand is, what is the process that all approvals and phase gate clearances are given to, given by the Town of Penfield in regards to approvals by New York State DOT, Monroe County DOT? And I guess, I think this has to go to the Monroe County Planning Department also by law. The town people need to understand, what are the phase gates? I personally don't want to see anything moving forward, and it, it's in the developers' benefit also. You don't want to start developing a site of this magnitude and find out that the traffic can't handle it. I, I, last traffic documents I see are back to September of 2011, where there's pointed out, and those by New York and Monroe County, there's opportunities for gridlock both on Empire Boulevard and on Creek Street, as presently proposed. And there's a, a traffic light here that's in all these plans that they, we're even considering that may exist. I don't think that might not exist. I don't think it should exist personally going up Creek Street myself. I think it's a traffic nightmare, or will be if it's developed as is. So, I want to know, to my satisfaction, that Monroe County and New York State approve all the traffic implications of this development before I want to come back here and complain about anything else. That's my request.
Okay.
That's all I have to say.
Do you want to-
Any questions? Oh, I, I want to leave a copy of this.
Want to explain the process at all and how we-
I'd be happy to explain the process. A rezoning application was made to the Town of Penfield, I believe, in 2009. Is that accurate? The town deemed the application complete and initiated the review process. Part of the requirements under New York State statutes is that the town undertake what's called a secret review, state environmental quality review. So, that was initiated and it was declared a type one, it met a type one threshold, which means a coordinated review is required. So, what that means is that the lead agency or, or the board having jurisdiction over the application puts out a call for lead agency.
Which in this case is us.
Okay, you're the lead ag-
So, the town, so the only board that can make a rezoning decision is the Town Board. So, the application for rezoning was made to the Town Board, and then the Town Board put out a call for lead agency. Who wants to be lead agency within the coordinated review process? So, coordinated review are those agencies you mentioned, county planning, county health department, county department of transportation, state department of transportation, I'm sure, department of environmental conservation, the water authority, I'm sure there's others I'm forgetting. So, out of all those agencies, the zoning board and the planning board. The planning board spoke up back in 2009 and said, "We would like to be lead agency. We do the site plan reviews. We think we're best equipped to handle that task." So, the, the Town Board concurred with that. That initiated a whole long process, a whole slew of steps that need to be undertaken as required by state law.
Is that documented?
Yeah. Yeah, so what happens first is the, the planning board says, "Okay, we're lead agency. We, we need to, we declare this a type one action, and we want you to do an environmental impact statement." The applicant says, "Okay. What do you want us to put in it?" And then the, the planning board adopts a scoping outline or approves a scoping outline. What that basically is, is a table of contents for a draft environmental impact statement. So, then the applicant puts together that document, itemizing all those contents that this board required them to do, and there was public participation throughout the entire process. So, many of you in the audience commented, and those comments were incorporated. So, now we have this draft environmental impact statement that's submitted to the town, to the department for the planning board. The planning board looks at it and says, "Yep, that matches everything that we told you needed to be in it." They said, "In this situation, no, we need more information." So, then the applicant goes back and gathers all the information until that draft environmental impact statement meets the expectations of this board. Then the board puts it out for public review, and then they schedule the public hearing on it. That's not required, but this, this board opted to do that because they wanted to get all the public input on that. So, we had a very long meeting. I don't remember if you were there or not.
Oh, yeah, I was there. No very familiar faces.
Listen to me, so I'm back.
Well, everyone's entitled to their opinions, and we appreciate your comments. So, we went through the public hearing, and from that, the, the planning board's responsibility is to put together a final environmental impact statement. So, they take all the comments and they look at it, and they say, "Okay, this was, you know, it's, it's not enough to say, 'I don't like Walmart.'" You have to say, "Well, what are you worried about?"
It's insignificant.
It's insignificant. "I'm worried about traffic." Okay, that's, that's definitely something we need to look into. So, there's an entire chapter on traffic, and the, the planning board went through and generated with the help of the staff and the consultants that they hired. There was a traffic consultant hired to work on this project.
I got his letter, too.
And-
He still has concerns, I thought.
That, you're, you're correct, because we don't just use a consultant, and then, this is the very beginning of, of the phase, so we're not even done with rezoning yet. This was, should we rezone? So, we, we went through this whole process. The board answered all the substantive comments in writing within the draft, I'm sorry, the final environmental impact statement. After that's done, and that's available on the town website, the board puts together their finding statement. So, what that is, is a summary of all the impacts that they think were key to this project, and then they describe how they feel that they were mitigated to the fullest extent possible to this board's satisfaction. And it's a coordinated review. So, all those agencies that I mentioned before all participated and said, you know, provided feedback. So, the, the DOTs, the county department of transportation, and the state department of transportation in specific to, related to traffic, but all those other agencies also participated, including county planning. So, then the board finalizes the, or adopts a finding statement, and then the state environmental quality review is complete. Now, the Town Board has their public hearing for rezoning. They take public input, and as the applicant represented during the presentation, the planning board based their finding statement on CPO 2. That was what was the site plan that was termed as. So, the, the Town Board then went forward and had a public hearing, which is required by law for rezoning. They can't just say, "Okay, we're going to rezone." They have to have a public hearing, so there's a whole process of public participation. They took all those comments in, and they took the finding statement comments from the environmental impact statement and approved a rezoning with several conditions, and many of which were, were touched upon tonight. So, now that the property's rezoned, the applicant has the option to do something with that property that's owned general business, as long as they comply with the finding statement of the environmental review and the conditions of rezoning that the Town Board put in place in their approval resolution. So, that's what this is. They're coming forward with a site plan and a subdivision application. So, we had, we had stormwater calculations, we had traffic data, we had, we had parking lot layouts, we had landscaping, we had an idea of what the light hiding was going to be, we had an idea of what the burn was going to look like, you know, cross-access and things of that nature. But until they're actually engineered, similarly, Mr. Calucci was describing Walmart's prototypes, and they estimated that it was 180,000 square foot building, and now they know exactly to the T it's going to be 185-ish, whatever, whatever, whatever. It, that's, that's the stage where now, we engineer, we, the applicant demonstrates that they meet the town's criteria and all the conditions that have been put in place for this project. So, another, so, so we're doing site plan and subdivision review right now. As we mentioned, we're missing two board members tonight who unfortunately couldn't be here, but they are weighing in on the project, and they will, we will be taking no action tonight because we do not have a quorum. So, nothing will happen as of tonight. The hearing will remain open. Public participation is welcome. That's why we have these meetings. We have an email distribution list, which I believe you're on, and as information comes in, it's placed on the town website by the planning department, and an email is sent out to that list notifying everyone that we have new information. And those are not requirements. That's the town's effort to engage the residents and the business owners who live here because your comments are important. You live here, you drive through these intersections, and we, we want to know what you think of this project. That's-
Actually, we all live here.
I hope so. It's probably a requirement, isn't it?
Yes, sir. That is absolutely a requirement.
Okay. But let's stick with traffic for an example here tonight, okay? I see where we're at in the process. I, little, still a little vague of what's down the road, and when you say, "That's it and everything goes."
Well, may I add just one?
Okay.
I don't need to be disrespectful and cut you off, but this site plan will include a condition of, this site plan, if it moves forward towards an approval resolution, will be conditioned upon state department of transportation and county department of transportation approvals.
Final sign-off before anything, the site plan is approved.
Yeah.
Monroe County DOT, New York State DOT will sign off, and exactly physically what goes on in the off-site will be totally known and approved by New York State and Monroe County DOT before one shovel enters to build this. Is that a, is that a correct statement? Pardon?
Looking to one of our town engineers, planning depart. It, so the, the way that construction works, what happens after a public hearing? So, the comments come in, the planning board issues tabling resolutions, which provide direction back to the applicant. It provides direction to staff. The planning board could say, "We're confused about whatever. We, we, we need more information." It's staff's job to go out and get those answers to provide to the boards that they can make an informed decision. So, we keep doing that until they get to the point where they're comfortable with information in front of them.
All right, and so we don't vote on an application until all that information is in, if that's the question that you're asking?
Well, I think I'm asking a lot of-
So, all the, the New York State Transportation, the Monroe County DOT, their comments need to come in, and we have them before we make a decision on an application.
One of the tabling resolution items that typically goes into a project like this, again, there'll be no action taken tonight, but the board most likely will table, include an item requiring the applicant to copy the town engineer on any- an item requiring the applicant to copy the town engineer on any correspondence between the state department of transportation and the county department of transportation.
What's, what's your concern?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, in a nutshell, because we can go on all night about this and not, not really get anywhere. So what, what's the point?
Okay. Well, I, I'd like to see it specified, exactly what's going to happen traffic-wise, and-
What type of-
Changes are required.
Roadways and signals and things like that.
We've heard for, we've heard for five years now that there's going to be a sovereign drive and an entrance there. I think it's a little short notice that some people in that area were just informed of that within a week. You know, it's been all, all these plans. I'm suggesting that other things like that could come up relative to transportation. The, the project gets wheels, starts being built, people are sinking money into this, and then we find out we have a traffic disaster in our minds. Who's going to back up? Is the building going to go away? You know, you need to know how it's going to end up looking before you start. That's all I ask.
And, and that will happen.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, sir, come on up.
Good evening, members of the board. My name's Carl Essler. I'm an attorney with the Bonsheniken King firm here in Rochester. By the way, Katie, I got to say, that's the, the best valedictory address you possibly could have given, and I hope to see her from time to time out in, out in Victor.
That was not a secret presentation.
I, I trust the board received the two letters that I sent over this morning on behalf of my two clients on Sovereign Drive?
I believe we got them tonight before, can't say that we've read them, but-
Okay, the, the gist of them is very simple, and I won't repeat them in any great detail. By the way, my two clients, first of all, one is Pamela Decker, who owns the property at the, the building with the insurance, Allstate Insurance Agency, on the north side of the Sovereign Creek Street intersection. And my other client is a company called Retlaw Recsed Inc., which owns the property that's on the south side of the Creek Street Sovereign intersection. It's a fairly large parcel, and then a smaller parcel-
Northeast and southeast corner of Sovereign and Creek Street.
Correct. And then another smaller parcel, so. And again, I think very simply at this point, and again, we appreciated, well, it's quite correct what the representative for Sovereign said, which is that my clients didn't find out anything about this proposed connection through Sovereign until approximately a week ago, but, but we were very, very appreciative of the fact that the applicant had a meeting with us, and we had some, at least some preliminary discussions. But as my letters set forth, and by the way, my, my two clients have distinct issues and concerns, I'm, but I'm not going to get into those in great detail because you have my letters. But I think we have a sense for both of them, that again, we do concur that we think there needs to be some more discussion amongst the town, the, the applicant, and all of the owners on Sovereign Drive about a number of issues that may impact that, that roadway, that private roadway. You know, just the general traffic impact, liability issues because it is a private road, cost and maintenance, things of that nature. We're not here tonight taking a, you know, a formal position one way or another because we think we need more information, and invite, please, we ask the town to please help us get involved in that process as we go forward. Other than that, we have no inherent, you know, opposition to the, to the development project as a whole. Our concern is, is mostly how we're going to work out, or what will happen with any connection with Sovereign Drive and the developments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience?
Hi, my name is Anna Oris. I live on Guy Grace Lane, which is just behind the proposed development. I only have one question that came from a comment made earlier about delivery times and whether there was any limit towards that. I would just like to submit that, being as, we really don't know what kind of effect all the noise buffering that is proposed will actually have on the noise coming into the neighborhoods at different times. That the board at least impose time restrictions of when they can have their deliveries, at least if for nothing else for a year, and then have it be revisited after a year when we can really have a better evaluation of what kind of impact that noise will have. It could be that we say, "You know what? We can hear them anyway, so it really doesn't matter." Or we can say, "You know what? That really is an intrusion on our lives on the other side of the berm and in the neighborhood. Let's keep that in place." But I would suggest that at least for a year after they are fully operational, that a time restriction on deliveries be in place, and that it be revisited a year after that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, sir, come on up.
My name is Craig Maddock. I live at 119 Jewelberry Drive, and looking at the picture there, I think my new neighbor will be the loading dock. And that, that brings me to three things I wanted to talk about. The visual aspect of this, the sound aspect, and the traffic. And we've all heard a little bit about it in the beginning, but from visual, the berm is, is apparently going to be sufficient, I think. Someone commented earlier that its height and the top is, is enough where you should not see it through your second-story bedroom window, if you will. I guess that'll work for the building, but I didn't know there was going to be a great big air conditioning cooling unit right on top of the building, so I want to make sure that that is also hidden from the visual.
And that, I don't know if you, we had actually brought up that point, and it's all screened by parapets around the building, and the overall height of that, because I actually asked that, that same question.
I'll save that and revisit it later when I get to see this. I was a resident of this area before the property was rezoned, so I know what it's like to say, "There's dense woods there." Kind of dense, it's just a wild area. But the berm should help with the visual. That was one of my concerns. The second thing is the traffic in the back of the building, the loading dock, the trucks coming in and out. We have trucks coming in and out nowadays. In the existing Walmart, I do not believe is 24/7. I think 24/7 for deliveries is going to be a little bit much. In the winter, you deal with snow. In the summer, you deal with trash. People work in that building, and they load the, the shelves during the middle of the night, four o'clock in the morning. There's something that goes bang over there often. And I don't know if it's a trash can, or a compactor, or something like that, but we still hear noise. And if more trucks are going to be there 24/7, which is different than we're accustomed to, whoever mentioned, you know, maybe we ought to try a smaller window before we expand it to let the things come in and out all the time? So be it. I don't know. I, I think the Walmart in Victor is not even a 24/7 operation, so maybe we don't even need to have the store be open those hours. But I, you know, that's for the town to help the residents, to make sure that our, our lives aren't intruded on that much. The last thing is the traffic, and I heard someone comment that the road is going to be improved to the Webster Town Line. Well, that's not good enough. I have children that go to school at Schrader and over at St. Rita's, and I can tell you the traffic trying to get out a hatch road at rush hour or middle of the afternoon is just impossible. You cannot turn at the lights to get in and out. One car at a time, let all the traffic clear that's going to the east from the plaza area before you can turn on the hatch. So that light and that little strip right to the town center in Webster needs to be looked at as a whole, not just that little piece at that corner, because that whole road is just clog solid. That's all the comments I have. Please, town, look out for the residents' interest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Peter Noak. I own Baytown Liquor in Baytown Plaza. I've been part of the process, the rezoning and now the planning board process. I'm starting to become involved in that. So I, I've, I've owned Baytown Liquor while we opened two years ago. I, I bought it three and a half years ago. I have faith in what's going on here and the, and the due diligence that's being done, and you guys are doing a great job. But I would like to mention one thing. Everything that was spoken about tonight in terms of the process, and we just got to hear it, thank you for that. There wasn't anything about the business owners in Baytown Plaza. I mean, there's a lot of business owners working very, very hard every day to try to keep our, our heads above the water while this occurs. And I also want to mention that as much as you take the residents into consideration, take us into consideration as well. We've been getting, we've been taking a beating in this plaza. It's been terrible. We need you to step up the pace, all right? I, I can't be patient anymore. I need you to step up the pace, okay? Please, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Holly Fan, and I own nail salon in Baytown Plaza. I've been there 17 years, so the business go up and down, I see it all, and this is a win-win situation. We need to move forward. Everything the people that have brought up tonight, I'm pretty sure the town, everything have been studied, and that's why we are approved, rezoned. That's how we come down with the building. And the people, that my clients have come to me for years, even they were not in favor, but now they heard, they hear Superbloom are going to come in soon, they are excited. They've been, we've been waiting for a long time. So we need to bring the business come alive to Baytown. This is, is a healthy, is a healthy things for our community, and also is bring economies and to make the Baytown businesses get going. We've been suffering and surviving to serve the Penfield community. Okay? So support us. We are business owners here.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Beverly Mitchum, and I stay at 30 Pennwell Park, behind Suburb. Before, when I moved there was, that street wasn't there. And I came here tonight and concerned about the traffic, if they ever went through that street. Now I hear people saying that they are thinking about going through there. I hear enough noise at my house at 30 Pennwell Park, because I'm right behind Suburb, and we made a, a plan where they wouldn't have those trucks at night going beep, 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 because I can hear all the noise from my window, from Walmart, from that place. And if they had traffic going through there, that would really be a problem for homeowners over there. So I just want them to think about going through Suburb. But otherwise, having the Walmart, that's fine with me, as long as they don't have to come in the back of my house.
Okay, thank you. Who else? Okay, just, we got several emails and written correspondence from neighbors and concerned citizens that I just wanted to acknowledge that they will be made a part of the record, and we do take everyone's comments seriously. And so just wanted to state that for the record, and if nobody has any more comments from the board, from you folks, do you have anything else to say, or?
No, thank you for, for your time.
Thank you for coming. Thank everyone for coming, and I'll call this hearing still open until our out-of-town compatriots get to-
Enjoy.
Thanks. Good night, everybody. Drive safe.